Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Call the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
I'm here, council. I don't have any additions or corrections for you.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Pat to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Carry implications from Faith Lutheran Church. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First of all, thank you for inviting Faith Lutheran here this afternoon. I'm Jeff Amson, pastoral intern at Faith. Yes.
Intern.
That would be the, what's that last line on the resume? Job description. duties as I was designed, yes. Um, but good afternoon. If you feel so moved, uh, please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for so many blessings in our lives. Thank you for safely bringing all these good people together and for their calling to serve. Please bless this meeting and those attending with understanding and with peace. So that might might work together to discuss and to make informed decisions to help improve our city. Bless the work they do here and bless these that do that work and bless our city. Help them to discern not only what is good, but what is your will. Give them all safe travels at the end of their meeting back to their homes and families. And a happy heart for the good that they have done. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? Alrighty, we have a resolution, uh, resolution number one, five, four, seven, nine. Resolution accepting two hundred dollar donation to the Hutchinson Police Department from Rich Westland. Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Uh, public comment, people addressing the council, please come forward. Alrighty, approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried consent agenda. This will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh, A is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the McCloud County Pheasants Forever at Bobbin Barber Brewery. On September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, B is approval of resolution number one, five, four, seventy-eight. Resolution to sell surplus property that's informational technology items. Uh, C is approval of resolution number one, five, four, eight, one. Amendment to the City of Hutchinson Flexible Benefit Plan. D is approval of easement right acquisition at forty-five North High Drive Northwest. E is claims appropriation and contract payments. Is there any thing that anybody wants pulled off? Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Uh huh, second.
Motion by Dave, second by Pat to approve the consent agenda. In a discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, communication requests and petitions, review of the intersection control evaluation report, Dale Street and South Grade Road. Mr. Kent.
Yes, good evening. Or afternoon. Uh, within your packet, like the, the mayor just mentioned, is a report from SRF Consulting Group. Uh, like we've talked about for some time now, we've been analyzing, uh, you know, SRF has been with the city staff assistant analyzing the intersection of, of South Grade Road and Dale Street Southwest. Uh, looking at potential intersection improvements, namely, uh, possible implementation of a roundabout at that intersection. Um, this is the existing scenario. Just wanted to throw that up quickly for everybody. It's a four-way stop condition. Uh, with the, you know, opposing left turn lanes on the South Grade Road portion of the intersection. Uh, the Dale Street portion basically is, it's a one-lane approach, you know, where you take multiple movements from the one-lane approach, you know, like the Arocho, uh, straight or right or left. And then, uh, likewise, or additionally on the South Grade Road. Legs is, are these right turn lanes, pork chop scenarios per se. Um, which really are necessary due to the skewed nature of Dale, uh, coming in and crossing South Grade Road. Dale, you know, is, is on that alignment because, you know, you, you go back in time, that obviously was a county road. That came into the, uh, the west side, uh, or was the west perimeter of Hutchinson at one point in time. Now it's, it's obviously a city street, uh, currently, so that intersection is, other than these improvements and, and the pork chops and the, the right turn lanes and you know, improving the capacity on, with respect to turning movements on South Grade Road has never truly been improved, I guess, to, to do away with the skew. We'll talk a little bit more about that shortly. Otherwise in here, you know, you have all the information with respect to the traffic volume effort that the counts that were, were completed, uh, back on these dates in July of, uh, of two thousand twenty. Uh, counting not only volume, but, uh, the multitude of turning movements on, uh, South Grade and Dale respectively. And that's, that's this drawing. It gets into the counts, the, uh, current, uh, twenty twenty-one volumes and turning movements. Uh, that's, you know, doing a little bit of a, of a inflation factor on it to get to a twenty twenty-three design year, opening year. And then, what, what Mandala always wants to see is a projection twenty years out, you know, a theoretical life cycle of the roadway improvements from the design year. So that's just a simple inflation factor that's, uh, applied to a different types of roadways. And with that, you get into warrants analysis. Uh, the counts and the turning movements don't warrant a traffic signal. They do warrant a four-way stop, which in essence then warrants a roundabout. So that, the volumes, the counts show that, you know, roundabout is justified, you know. Well, first and foremost, the four-way stop is justified, that exists today, but a traffic signal is not. Then it gets into, uh, I should, level of service today is at a level B. Which shows down here, which, you know, that's basically your, your grade school grading system, you know. A is good, B, F is bad. Uh, so, uh, B is, is not too bad and the, the projections of a, of a four-way stop are, uh, aren't bad, but they, they do get somewhat problematic during peak hour time periods in the AM and, and PM hours, which is no secret. And, uh, yeah, that, that's what this shows, you know. If you do the twenty-year projections, you know, a four-way stop will, will get to an F eventually. But on the other hand, those traffic volumes might not be achieved twenty years from now, you know. Growth, that, those inflation factors assume growth and, you know, it, different dynamics and if those don't occur and if there isn't substantial housing growth or, you know, the school doesn't grow substantially, you know, the traffic at that intersection more than likely isn't gonna go up to these levels that, uh, are arrived at in this study. So with that in mind, you know, just-
Kent, did you want to touch on the crash?
Yeah, I can do that quick. There, there is a crash history there and it, it is warranted. Uh, it is above average, national averages and state averages for that, that type of intersection. Uh, there aren't any severe crashes, uh, thankfully, over the, the recent past here. But there, there is a, a slight crash history that, uh, has occurred there and that's not unexpected for this type of four-way intersection. You know, stop signs get, get blown and, uh, you know, people run into each other unfortunately. And thankfully, what, what's showing up to date is that nothing serious has happened.
The angle when you're on it is-
Excuse me?
The angle is cumbersome because you have to look backward.
Yeah, exactly. So on the other hand, I think it shows that people are, are stopping and you know, they're, they're taking their turn and, and queuing appropriately. This just gets into some assumptions. In the end, uh, the study, you know, based on the traffic analysis does recommend a roundabout. Uh, even, uh, based on today's traffic volumes and the peak hour dynamics that are occurring. That being said, you know, this gets into near-term recommendations. We'll talk about that and then, and the next slide here, but, uh, or show the drawing of the near-term recommendations on the next slide. These near-term recommendations are really what staff arrived at in conjunction with SRF realizing that implementing the roundabout to correct the skew. It's one thing to design a roundabout in a perfectly teed perpendicular intersection, but the skew of this roadway based on the traffic volumes and the type of vehicles, namely buses, obviously in that area, and there are some truck traffic that does hit that intersection, whether we like it or not, but the trucks do navigate that on occasion is what the, the counts did show. I'm gonna go to the other drawing first. Yeah, this is the recommended, uh, roundabout footprint and yeah, unfortunately, due to the, the volumes, the type of vehicles, it the design parameters and standards push this footprint out. Obviously, it's a skewed oval due to the due to the nature of the existing intersection and that the property impacts were just too substantial to justify this improvement at this point in time. My, my hope was this footprint would have been more condensed based on the traffic analysis and the consultant's recommendation. But, uh, those are the experts on this front. Uh, this is what they've, uh, presented for a, a final recommendation. It's understandable. Obviously, this, uh, has serious implications relative to Hanson Gravel's property and I've spoken to Mr. Hanson and uh, as we've gone through this study process and, uh, I don't believe he would be accepting of, of this scenario by any means and that's understandable also. So, and then it obviously impacts the church property too and, uh, their parking lot and the access to that, uh, northwesterly lot. The other two quadrants, it isn't too bad. They would have to be, you know, on the, on the northeast and the southeast quadrants, there would have to be takings to, uh, you know, get the pedestrian facilities in, so you would be into a fair amount of, you know, property acquisition regardless on those quadrants also, so.
So this would be more like the size on the north and south end of town as opposed to-
Not quite that large. It'd be more comparable to the golf course road one.
Okay.
Yeah, footprint-wise. With, you know, not being a true circle, obviously, you got it, you have to introduce this oblong oval geometry to account for the skewed roadway. So with that in mind and realizing that this really wasn't feasible from a property owner's standpoint. We're like that, at these improvements, uh, to be implemented within the, uh, the proposed Dale Street and Roberts Road project, uh, that is, uh- Being designed as we speak, uh, by city staff. And for hopefully for delivery next year in two thousand twenty-three. But what this would achieve is improving this pedestrian crossing on the north leg. Currently, that crossing is up here. You can see this pad ramp here a little bit where the grass boulevard is separated. So that cross is there today. We would bring this down towards the stop sign. Which is the conventional crossing approach, obviously. And then we'd bring them across onto that pork chop island and then cross the, uh, the right turn lane. The other hope was possibly doing away with these free rights. Um, in the end, we don't believe that's possible. You could do that, but to keep the skew the way it is of Dale, you would just end up with a whole lot of pavement there. You really wouldn't improve the, the condition that, uh, is occurring today. You would just end up with a rad here. Instead of having a pork chop here, you'd end up with a slew of pavement in that spot. You'd still need this, this radius here, basically mirroring what's in place today to accommodate truck movements to make that right. So this does help the, the pedestrian safety. Obviously, this is a trail now, you know, and it's a trail all the way to the school. So this, this facility, this, uh, trail does get utilized quite a bit, you know. It's no secret and especially this east-west movement along, uh, South Grade Road. So this will help clean up the pad safety dynamics of crossing a Dale at that intersection. Then on the south leg, we're gonna push this curb line out adjacent to the church property, just a matter of about three to four feet. And there, there is room there. We won't be impacting their trees. There's a fair amount of right-of-way and, and green space in that area. And that, what that'll allow us to do is incorporate left turn lanes, opposing left turn lanes uh, on both sides of that intersection. There's plenty of width here on the north lane. North leg, excuse me, to already do that. So we just need to do this slight modification on the south leg. You get enough room to put this standalone left turn lane in. So that will make it basically Dale will then mirror what's on South Grade today with respect to a turn lane configuration. So that's what we're proposing will be, uh, implemented in, within the design of, uh, that, that project, which includes the reconstruction of Dale from Roberts on the north end through this intersection on the south end. With that, I don't know if there's any questions, thoughts? Took some time to get to this point. I think it, this study effort was worthwhile. I think it, it really paints the picture of what's, what's happening at that intersection. What could be done in the future, uh, what should be done now within our project to at least improve some of the dynamics out there and we'll leave it at that and the volumes and movements don't change, you know. Ten, twenty years from now, I, these, this intersection built to this level will be just fine.
So Kent, on that pork chop, uh, island.
Yep. Right here.
You make a ninety-degree turn to get back over to the trail. Is there enough on, uh, space on that, uh, island to hold, what, two, three, four? Bikes, two, three, four people, five, six people?
Well, I hate to think there's more than that, but yeah, no, our hope would be, yeah, that obviously there, there's space, they're queued, which they should be. They do have the right-of-way, so once, uh, and we are gonna, I should have mentioned, we are gonna take these yields out and make these free rights stop conditions. Just to improve, this one already crosses in that manner.
Yeah.
Can see there, yeah. Where it's not coming, you know, it's not doing the, the, the turn isn't happening per se on the island, but it, they do have a refuge on the island on that. So, yeah, wh- what happens is you know, once, even if you had, you know, let's say schools out and you have thirty kids here. Once this vehicle stops for the, the first one starts crossing, theoretically, they all just start crossing in a roll, you know. And they, they have the right-of-way, so they can just move right through and then there's a vehicle approaching here, they should be stopping for them likewise and letting them all filter on through. So yeah, really to answer your question, Dave, there should be no reason to stop on that island.
Okay. And, and I would say too, I think that improves your, your cross. I mean, I've seen cars crossing the road and they're stopping because right now your other crosswalk is way back.
Yeah, it's up here.
You're always kind of confusing where to stop.
Yeah, exactly.
And I think that will clean some of that up as well.
No, this is a good improvement. My hope was we could do away with the pork chop and really clean that up, but yeah, you just can't get vehicles around that right, you know, with that skew on Dale. You would still end up with a radius way back here. So yeah, like I said, that's where we ended. I think, yeah, it was a, it was a good effort. It, uh, yeah, tells the story of the intersection, uh, at this point in time and going forward.
Kent, is there signage up now for, where you'll lean to pedestrians there?
No, actually there isn't and there will be. There, there isn't down on this leg.
Cause I can't remember. I'm like, I don't remember.
I don't, yeah, that was a nuance we discovered. You're exactly right, Gary, and, uh, here, they're at the stop condition. So they, you don't need the pedestrian, the yellow signs at, at this point. We are going to put them on these these rights, you know, cause that is not as, well, the stop sign's up here, so people should be slowing, but they're not necessarily stopping in front of it. So we are gonna put some advanced warning pedestrian crossing signs on those right turn lanes. Alright. We're good on that one?
Is that-
Yep, just a review item tonight. If there's, isn't any other questions? Like I said, yeah, we'll just staff and move forward, uh, finalizing the plans, doing those near-term improvements and, uh, hopefully the project is delivered next year. Then move on to the, the next one.
Here, wanna move on to the next one? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I was ready, sorry.
All good.
I was looking at pictures. They were lost.
Oh, go, you wanna introduce it? What? Okay, alright, I'll just go ahead, alright. Uh, Northeast Area Infrastructure Study. We're just gonna review this study quickly. Uh, this was, uh, finalized way back in April. Been sitting on my stack for a while, so just wanted to go through this effort that, uh, SEH did for the, uh, the city over the last year or so. Looking at the, uh, the infrastructure basically necessary to get out to the Highway seven and twenty-two intersection. There has been, you know, some development inquiries over the years. I think the level of seriousness of those development inquiries, I think, is debatable, but, uh, you know, the, the property owner, there's one primary property owner out in that area now and he does, you know, ask city staff where the potential infrastructure, what infrastructure improvements are envisioned on the city's end to service that area that is annexed in the, well, some of it's annexed in the city limits. So with that, I'm just going to jump through a lot of this front-end information. We'll get into the phases and first and foremost, what, what comes up before we get into the drawings is the cost for this effort. And this includes roadway, storm sewer, drainage, uh, sanitary sewer. Uh, there are some lift stations that are potentially needed and then, uh, the water, main water distribution system. So, uh, you know, at the, the point of time of this, uh, this study effort being put together, you know, uh, the consultant arrived at just over, wow, almost thirteen million dollars, uh, take, uh, the, this amount with a grain of salt, obviously in today's construction environment, you know, it's a bit of an unknown. But the, the numbers were, you know, put together a few months ago, so I think they're fairly reflective of where the industry is at, at this point in time. Yeah, that's some, uh, hydraulic calculations. Now we'll get into the figures. So this is the overall study area. This is Highway seven, east-west here. Uh, this was twenty-two as labeled here, so obviously here's the T-intersection of, of seven and twenty-two. Um, the primary focus of the study was the area to the south of Highway seven. We did take a look at the area to the north as a whole. We didn't divide it into sub-grainage areas and sub-study areas like we did on the south side, but we wanted to account for the potential service area of bringing sewer, sanitary sewer and water facilities across Highway seven at this location and conceivably at this location. So what, what that base, this analysis basically showed us is that these facilities then could be utilized to service all the way, you know, up to two hundred street over the Bluff Street, north of, uh, you know, the former HDI campus. And then a ways out here on Highway seven on the north side. Now we'll get into a little more detail on the south side of the roadway. This is more show to, uh, show the parcels and the property ownership. Uh, obviously at this point in time, this can change at any, at any time, so, uh, there is one name that pops up quite a bit, you know, last name here and that's, uh, uh, the, the party that does, you know, inquire upon occasion, so, uh, they have, uh, secured a fair amount of the property, not only on the south side adjacent to that south side of seven, but also up here on the, uh, north side also. And then this is basically the same drawing. Uh, this shows, uh, the trunk water main, which is in blue and the trunk sanitary sewer, which is in green, which is, you know, the backbone of your infrastructure, you know, to, to begin to service this area. Um, this is tying into the existing facilities right here in the very northeast corner of Energy Park. So there's, uh, the ADA's incubator building, Friedole Building, so yeah, there's that temporary cul-de-sac if you've been out there. So those pipes basically come to here and go up here and then just and south of the loose line trail corridor. So those would tie, we'd tie into those mains. You would take up, take off, go to the north and get to the south side of the existing parcels up there. Uh, Quaddie's Egg Systems, uh, the Schmeling parcels and then over to Factory Direct and the parcel on the, on the corner of the intersection here. So you'd follow their back property line in essence with those facilities cross twenty-two, uh, to the east and then get over to the, uh, easterly perimeter of this large parcel and then extend north and south at that point. Getting the facilities out of Energy Park to this point would also allow you the ability then to do this initial extension by egg syst-, to the west of egg systems there, between them and Schmalings up to, uh, Highway seven and cross Highway seven and service the area immediately to the east of the, uh, Uperner, uh, Resonatics, uh, entrance there. Which is now a public street as of a few years ago. And that's really one extension. The other extension that, that's feasible and more, and even, you know, probably more realistic is the possible extension of picking up those mains to basically at the temporary cul-de-sac and then bringing them into what would be the second phase of, uh, Energy Park and completing this loop road. Obviously, the pipes would be under that road that would then tie back down to Fifth Avenue. That would, those mains would service these three parcels. And then you could extend them along the north side of Fifth Avenue and bring them across Highway twenty-two and then service this area south of the County Ditch, which you can just barely see in the background that cuts through here. So this area really needs to be serviced from the south, you know. And like I just explained, the area north of the County Ditch, which resides here, would be serviced from the north. And that's a lot of, a lot to digest, but it, I mean, this is even tough to- And that's a lot of, a lot to digest, but it, I mean, this is even tough to envision to a certain degree, but uh. It's uh, this is, this is a uh, a good approach. Uh, this is really what, what you would need to do to create a uh. You know, get the mains out here and, and ultimately service this corner of this intersection, then the meantime you would service. Have the ability to service these existing properties on the south side of highway seven while servicing. This parcel in this area. Uh, this one just basically shows the uh, property ownership of the uh, south, of the uh, north area. Then we get into uh, sub-assumptions relative to stormwater and drainage, uh, different runoff ratios. Uh, assuming like I just mentioned, that this area in essence would be the second phase of in. Energy parks, you had be industrial and then the other areas were identified as commercial, which has a little bit more impervious. Hard surfacing uh, ratio percentage applied to it. And that's the general laid land, uh, which way the uh, the water is going, runoff is going today. Which then arrives at a, a ponding system somewhat similar to what's over in energy part today, large ponds. You know, more linear nature, not so much round, to also provide conveyance of stormwater, which limits your pipe installations to some degree. Um, yeah, it's uh, when you develop, you know, based on that commercial impervious surface parameter, you know. That results in, you know, per today's standards, a lot of ponding, a fair amount of ponding. And some relatively large pipes, you know, seventy-two inch pipe, forty-eight inch pipe, you know, thirty-six inch pipe. And then uh, this, this drawing really uh, plays out the, you know, the conceivable uh, phasing plan. Uh, basically you, like I touched on already, you have a phase one A and phase one B where really. This phase one A, you know, is taken off from the, the northeast corner here and building mains, like I mentioned up. Pushing up towards seven, where on the other hand, you could start here and build this today. Also, you know, extending into the next phase of energy park. These two stand alone. Uh, either one could happen at any point in time, you know, so it's not like one A needs to happen before one D needs to happen. One B can stand on its own and, and be delivered sooner than later, prior to any of this. Infrastructure happening, heading through the, the north. Then you get into phase two, which would be an extension of one B and then you get into all these different phasing. And this is more so for just estimating purposes, trying to bracket this a little bit, carve it out in different pieces, so. You know, you, you would have this leg, this purple leg, you know, that could be extended across seven. Likewise, once you get across twenty-two and extend down here in this green phase, you could then. Extend to the north across seven, farther to the east. Then that plays into the breakdown of the cost for each respective. Phase or portion of the work. So it really starts to dissect the uh, the twelve million dollar plus construction number. You know, into the street cast, the storm sewer pass, the water main and sanitary sewer respectively. And that's about it. This is all the gory detail, obviously in the uh, the cost estimation process. So if that, and if there's any questions?
So Kent, how many times would you be going across the trail then? Just.
Well, initially there'd be this one right here, coming up out of the energy part. The mains are stopped just south of it today, so you pick up and bring that across. And then, you know, ultimately in the future to service this area south of the trail, we'd have to come back down. Across it again, so twice conceivably. And I should have mentioned what, what's showing here, this is. The roadway and the, the black dashed white line here, future roadway infrastructure. That would just be public right away in essence, you know, there might be additional private roadways, you know, extending into a development here. Or there might even be public roadways, additional public roadways playing off of this, depending on how it was developed and what type of development, but yeah. If you, if you go out there on twenty-two today, once you get beyond the south edge of these parcels, you'll see approaches here today. Off of twenty-two and that's really the planning there is for a backage road per se of this type. So Mendat has, has set up the right away on twenty-two to allow access points. On each side of twenty-two at that location, which then would accommodate a roadway of this type. A backage roadway scenario. Like I mentioned earlier, this would be the. You know, next phase of energy park. This roadway coming out for that cul-de-sac, tying back into fifth avenue.
So the ponds would go into our storm sewer system?
Yep.
Not into the county ditch?
Ultimately, they go into the county ditch, but they would be treated water in ours. We would create these pipes and secondary pipes that would then get the water to the ponds, then. Would ultimately tie into the ditch. At this location and at this location, yes. Yeah, these two outlet are basically outlet pipes, yep. So the county would have to bless this system, obviously, you know, to ensure that we're not sending too much water. The ditch's direction post the development.
You know, mayor council, I'll just know, you know, we talk about from a staff perspective, that when we make decisions, we don't do it based off of just today, next week, next month, or even next year. And I think this is a good example of really trying to prepare the city for the future growth. Um, when you think about commercial industrial growth, really there's still a little bit of area in the south part of town down by Target Menards. But that's getting to be very limited and then you've got, I guess, some physical barriers when you think about the airport. Um, and, and, yeah, fairgrounds with, and so really, and then when you think about the west side of town, you've got the, the river and the lake there. And so I think we all believe the next, I mean, that this scheme goes back to our comp plan, really the next future growth of commercials on the east side of town. And so what Ken and his staff has done is really tried to lay out, okay, to get utilities out there, this is what, at today's rate, this is what it's gonna cost. Us to do that, so it really helps. If there is a desire to develop, but if there is a desire from that landowner to sell the land, that at least we're already somewhat prepared for somebody to come in to say. You know, this is what it, it would look like for utilities and this is probably what it's gonna cost, or at least having a ballpark for that, so.
Yeah, no, it, it starts to paint the picture like, like Matt says. I think the one. I get that issue, but which, what'll have to be worked through is ultimately how much the adjacent property owners do pay. Cause some of the, the properties are within city limits, some aren't. You know, and when you start taking off going to the north, especially on the back of some of those properties that aren't. You, you can't, you're gonna have to get agreements from non-city property owners, which obviously can be problematic. It's not insurmountable, but uh. You know, you're gonna wanna defer those costs or spread those costs ac- across those properties to some degree. And so you're gonna have to have some buy-in from, you know, properties that are, are outside of city limits, but. There'll be a process, you know, this paints the picture, you know, but it'll be a process to start to deliver this, these improvements. This infrastructure.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Well, I, I think that's a good plan, cause with uh, somebody comes in and wants to. Build, bring their business here, they wanna do it instantly. You know, they, they want answers, you know, how mu- how much it's gonna cost and I'm sure they go out and it's kind of a bidding. Between other towns, so.
Well, in all honesty too, this saves us a year of planning.
Yeah.
There's still a lot more detail that we're gonna need, but we've got a good chunk of that already in the footwork slate.
Yeah, yeah, got the roadmap to start with, yeah. Thank you.
Alright, thanks Kent. We have no unfinished business under new business consideration for approval of resolution number one five four eight zero, resolution approving. For the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds series. Twenty twenty-two A and uh, proposed aggregate principal amount of six million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Wow.
Hey, it's less than last year though, right? Alright, good, good afternoon, mayor and council. We're here today like Gary talked there to discuss the city's upcoming bond issuance. And this is primarily based on discussions that you all had with Andy last council meeting, so this is what it's all based off of here. And as Gary mentioned, the total value of the bonds is gonna be six point one five million dollars. Two point one million of that for the street and, and, street and infrastructure improvements, West London Park and four million dollars for the final. Financing portion of the new police facility construction. Um, please also note that the police portion has been brought down roughly one million dollars for reserves that we're gonna plan to use for that. Then the plan would be to replenish those reserves with the money that we get from the sale, the future sale that you'll see in the current police station. Uh, tonight we will ask you to approve resolution one five four eight zero to authorize the city. And others, our financial advisors to move for, move forward with the bond issuance process. Uh, the bond sale will plan to take place and be awarded to the winning bidder at the September thirteenth council meeting and bond proceeds expected. Shortly thereafter in, or in October. And now tonight Nick and Huck from others is here to go a bit further in depth in this for you, so feel free to ask any questions that may come up.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, mayor and council members. It's good to be back in front of you. So really to piggyback the discussion, uh, with the proposal to finance these projects, uh, the council, you've already held public hearings to provide the authority. To make this decision, uh, now we're just following through on the finite details about what the proposed issuance would be. Uh, for the remaining portion of the police facility projects, we're going to structure the repayments to kind of mirror. The amount that was financed last year, so that has stretched out, uh, impacting the levy over thirty years, that's to try to. Minimize uh, some of the annual budgeting pressure and spread that cost out. Um, but this will just be layered on top of the amounts that were obtained last year. And then for the street reconstruction or the, the part that's fun- funding the uh, surface work that's underway. Uh, that will be repaid over the course of fifteen years, again from dedicated property tax levy. And assessments levied against the benefiting property owners on that piece of, uh, that infrastructure improvement. Uh, the total levy impact for next year is anticipated to be about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, we have plugged this into. Uh, the debt management model that uh, finance department uh, maintains and we've sort of structured the repayment to fit within the long-term plans of the city. So uh, when we plug it all in, looking at estimates of about three and a half percent on the interest rate, that's what we're seeing today. It's actually a little bit higher than what we're seeing today conservatively. Uh, if we did price this today, we would anticipate somewhere in about a three point three, three point three five. Percent rate, which is actually, you know, even though it's much higher than what we were able to obtain last year, uh, at this time.
Higher than that one percent.
It's uh, it's uh, fairly low when you look at maybe a ten or fifteen year history of the city, when we've definitely been above four percent in some of the financings. And again, this is over a, a thirty year repayment term, so it's still uh, fairly good in that lens, but yeah, last year we were about one point seven. Percent on that financing, so it was good to lock that in last year, but now we're here to kind of finish it off. So um, happy to answer any questions of the council, but uh, you know, the market is still vibrant, uh, we're still getting good bidding. Out there and uh, we do expect that this will be well received in the marketplace.
Nick, how many, how many uh, bidders did we have last year? Do you remember?
Gosh, you know, um. Give me a second, I will. Now that, that was a sizable bond, right? So, you know, we borrowed about seven million for the police facility, but overall it was about thirteen million in total. When you add all the other infrastructure, um, I thought it was about eight bids. I, I do have the information right here, if you just give me a second, I'll. He does it. About eight, so this one was six.
The size of the bond tends to bring in more higher.
Typically, when it, when it is stretched out over thirty years, it kind of dilutes that, you know, there, there's not really science behind this. Um, it, it depends on what else is priced in the market at the time, um, but a larger issue will generally attract some of the bigger. Uh.
Bigger layers.
Um, but this one again, you know, six million again is nothing to sneeze at, so we do, we do anticipate that this will be well received. Um. So yeah, uh, we certainly do recommend, recommend moving forward as long as this, you know, fits within your borrowing plans, um, and we certainly again have. Worked with uh, Andy and Justin to make sure that it, it does fit within the long-term uh, levy plans that the city has adopted.
Any other questions?
The only one I would have is uh, I s- I think I read somewhere in here previously that uh, these bonds are bank.
Bank qualified, yeah.
Qualified.
That's right, so uh.
We have a bank a couple of years ago that, out of Glencoe that bought.
That's right, they did, they did, uh, they, they, they won the bid and it was just a single bank, they took the entire amount. Um, typically, when we offer these, we offer it to a wide array, a, a, a larger audience and they will either. Will have underwriting firms that partner together and they bid on pieces of it together as one, it's called a syndicate. Or you might see with that larger issue that there's a, you know, one underwriter bank, uh, or a, or a broker dealer firm that will. Buy the bonds and then they'll reoffer them to the retail market.
So what makes them bank qualified?
So the bank qualification is uh, part of the tax exemption, so when a bank, uh, well, so this project. Because it's uh, the police facility and street infrastructure is gonna be used by the public, it's not gonna be benefiting a private business. Or one particular resident, it's gonna benefit the community at large, uh, because of that. Under the uh, federal tax code in the state of Minnesota, we can designate this financing as tax exempt, that means. Whoever buys these bonds and holds them as an investment, the interest that they receive from the city on the repayment, they don't have to claim that. For purposes of taxation on their income taxes. Banks don't necessarily benefit from that, so if a bank was to hold this in their own portfolio and receive the interest payments directly, they wouldn't really benefit. From that like a, like you and I would, or maybe a business or another type of institution. There's another carve-out in the federal tax code that allows what they call small issuers to designate bonds. As bank qualified as well, and that does give the banks some of that benefit of the tax exemption, and so. Because you're issuing less than ten million dollars in this calendar year, we're able to designate these as bank qualified. And we put that in the documentation and the bid specs, and that lets banks know that even if they don't wanna buy. The full amount of bonds themselves, they can talk to their own brokers. And maybe they'll buy a piece of this, or they'll participate with those brokers, because it does make sense now for them to hold it within their own portfolios.
And you may recall last year, our bonds were not bank qualified because we were over that ten million dollar.
We do expect that there's a little bit of a hit when you're not able to designate it bank qualified, because you're limiting the pool a little bit. Uh, when banks are able to participate, you know, they get a little bit more aggressive in their bids, that means lower interest costs easily.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? entertain a motion?
Motion to approve resolution one five four eight zero.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
I carry.
Thank you.
See you in a month.
Consideration for approval setting budget workshops for August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two and September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two at four P M.
Yeah, mayor and council, um, obviously we're getting to really jump into the budget portion uh, of our year, and so we're just asked that you. Set the next two budget workshops, that will be to cover the C, the preliminary C I P and then discuss the preliminary budget and tax levy.
Motion approved. Budget workshops, August twenty. Motion approved, budget workshops, August twenty-third at four and September thirteenth at four.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve the setting of those two budget workshops, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Governance uh, E D A board minutes from June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Tall grass, not just weed, monthly report for June and July, two thousand twenty-two. Chief Jefferson, do you have anything for us tonight?
Uh, I think I would ask, how are you doing with all the trucks that are in the streets picking up branches and cutting down trees and? I just, you know, thinking about all the vehicles that are on lawns, on boulevards, on, in the street and. You know, that type of thing, I think is uh, just to people to be aware of that there is things going on out there that uh. Definitely needs to be cautious about.
Yeah, that's correct, um, reason I asked the question, uh, kind of wisely, but. Um, we did actually, we've had some contractors that. Um, aren't necessarily obeying some of the street signs and. Um, have a little bit of heartburn over being told where they can and can't go, so. Um, we've been trying to stay on top of it, um, taking citizen complaints and dealing with them accordingly, but uh, yeah, since you brought it up. That is something that we've been.
When they block a street, do they have to have permission to do that?
Yes, yes, I would say they do, um, that hasn't always been happening.
Yeah, okay, that's.
We wanna make sure that they're doing it safely as well and so if they're not asking, we can't really regulate that.
Thanks Chief.
Alright, thanks.
Do you have anything for us tonight?
Yeah, quickly on that note, uh, for uh, no guidance that's been provided with respect to storm damage, tree removal. Uh, we're doing it on a call-in basis and that's, you know, on the Facebook page and on the website, through Thursday. Two days from now, the eleven, so, yeah, people need to call in and uh. And then we'll get stuff picked up thereafter, not saying we won't fix it up, but uh, we need to draw the line at some point.
I think it's important for people to call in, cause I think some people just take it down the curve expecting they were gonna pick it up, but they need to call in and let staff know.
That's not, we're doing it on a call-in basis, just making rounds like that.
Along that note, I've had a lot of people compliment our city staff on what they've been doing. They uh, they said that had some that were blocking streets and stuff and they were out right away and got it taken care of, so. Kudos to them.
Oh, staff was in in the middle of the night that evening.
Yeah.
Otherwise, uh, pavement management program out by the, at the rec center, uh, uh. The uh, the paving for this year is basically done, there will be additional final wear course, uh. At the top lift at Blacktop, uh, on Linden and Sunset next year, uh, otherwise. Yeah, there's topsoil out there and they're doing the restoration and the turf establishment and such is basically what's left. Uh, Cassal one fifteen Airport Road and Jefferson uh, Street Roundabout, uh, the plans have been submitted to a, to the state. And uh, basically the right-of-way acquisition process on that project has been started by the county and the consultant. So, we'll see how the right-of-way process goes and the plan review and such, uh, the county is still hopeful that. That will be a twenty-three, twenty twenty-three project, but uh, I think uh, that being a certainty is yet to be determined. Based on how those uh, things go, namely the uh, the right-of-way acquisition process and that's it.
Thanks Kent. Mister support?
Nothing else tonight.
Mary? Dave?
I shut a lot ago.
You're all, you're all parked out, okay.
Nothing, enjoy the weather.
Yep. Right, man, I don't have anything either, so. Well, I, I guess the one thing, and I know it's out on social media, but the. The Aquatic Center's last day will be um, Saturday, August twentieth, so, um, that'll be the last day where it'll be. Fully operational, I think there's a couple of private rentals the next week and I think they're trying to do some fitness swim in the morning, but um. We're kind of losing all of our staff to either college or high school, um, so yeah, but the twentieth will be the last day the pool's open, so.
That's a tough call to make, I would think, isn't it?
Well, it's tough, you know, we always hear, well, can't you stay open to Labor Day and we'd love to, we just don't have the staff. Available to do that, which, you know, which always leads into the conversation when they ask, why didn't you enclose it? If we can't get staff to, to, to do a two-week period, imagine what it'd be like trying to find staff for a full, full year.
The retractable dome just was not.
Anything else?
No.
Oh, second Pat.
Okay, oh, sure.
Motion by Pat, second by myself, do adjourn.
You didn't hear it.
I'll put in favor, say aye.
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 Most, carried.